Good evening. Today is Monday, September 20th, 2021. It is time for the regular meeting of the City Council here in Waverly. Ask Carla to call the meeting order and ask for the roll call, please.
All four? Here. Bergen?
Here I am.
Drinkhouse?
Here.
Kangas?
Present.
Myers?
Here.
Raffi?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
All accounted for. Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move forward with item D, approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Motion by Bergen.
Second.
Second by Drinkhouse. Council discussion, if any. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item E, public comment. For items not on the agenda, please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Phil Trimble. I'm the candidate for, one of the candidates for City Council Ward Five. Earlier this year, just prior to the June special election, a postcard criticizing our current council member was sent to residents of Ward Two. This action was condemned by all members of the council. Within the past six weeks, my personal medical information has been leaked. Grossly misleading articles and flat-out lies have been published in the newspaper regarding my stances on issues and other issues that I will not speak of publicly out of concerns for my children's future. That's right, my children. These attacks are completely unwarranted. Waverly deserves better. Not long ago, a person, a personal friend of my family and somebody who I have the utmost respect and admiration for ran for a public office. A public office much higher level than the Waverly City Council. This individual refused to get down in the mud and refused to sling any trash because they thought that their constituents deserved better. I believe that the Waverly people deserve better. If you or your representatives need to lie to the people, you don't deserve their vote. And this goes for me and any candidate. If you need to mislead or take part in personal attacks, you don't deserve to be honored by sitting on the dais. And you don't deserve the people's votes, and neither do I. Since I have ran for council, the meanest thing I have said was "shame on you." Something I oftentimes said to my three-year-old, my son, when he was three. I employ all candidates to stick to the issues. Tell the people where you stand and stay out of the mud. This is what the people of Waverly deserve. In regards to the current election cycle, I propose that instead of canned answers to prepared statements, I would challenge anybody if they would like to, to a debate where we can have an interactive conversation about the issues because this is what the people deserve. They deserve to know where we stand and what we stand for. The mudslinging is unnecessary and there's no reason for it. Waverly is a place of honor. Just like sitting up on the dais is a place of honor. Just this weekend, I was followed around by somebody who was told to me that, it was told to me that they were a minion of somebody on the city council. That's, I was followed around the grocery store for 20 minutes. I walked in circles just to see how long she'd followed me. This is unnecessary. The people deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with public comment this evening?
Tim Kangas, 1112 Cedar River Drive. I am also a candidate for Ward Five and I believe that this is the appropriate time for me to speak on this issue rather than using time on the dais since this is being used as campaign speeches or campaign discussion. As to Mr. Trimble's comments about civility, I certainly can call for that. I want that. If he can point out where I have slung mud, I would be willing to take that back. The worst I said was that there were inconsistencies, inaccuracies in what he wrote. And then I offered a contra-opinion to that. He says the worst he said was "shame on me" except there is actually a video of him calling me "a liar." If that is not getting in the mud, I don't know what is. He says, "One of the things that I claimed was at the dry run we borrowed $10 million for." He uses a document from 2010, five years before we did the project, to point that out. I happen to have with me, excuse me, I don't have great eyesight up close, but it's Resolution 1463, which was passed on May 5th, 2014 by a vote of six to nothing on the council that was taking out bonds for 2.45 million, general obligation bond series 2014A for essential corporate purposes of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, dry-run project. That's the first one. I would note that that is a six-oh vote. I happen to be the absent vote on that. I was attending my daughter's last high school concert as a high school senior. In addition to that 2.45 million baller bond, I have, from February 16th, 2015, Resolution 1524, the city was borrowing 7.8 million for the dry run. 7.8 million and 2.45 million is 10.25 million. That is what the city borrowed, took out in bonds for the dry-run project. Yes, we received some funding from the state for that. That is being paid back to us on a yearly installment at about $500,000 a year. Through the year 2025, I don't know if we've gotten our one for this year from them for that. But like many things that, when you get money from the state, it's not that they're just handing you a check. It's that you're paying first and they will pay you back later. Same thing happens when we get money from the government as well, federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move forward with Section F, the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item number one is set the public hearing date on the status of funded activities for the City of Waverly, CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program for October 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Item two is a pay request from Baker Enterprises for the Eagle Ridge Drive and Cul-de-sac Extension for the amount of $137,886.39. Item three is a pay request from Cresco Building Service Incorporated for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $242,549.25. Item four is a pay request from Chosen Valley Testing Incorporated for the Public Services Center North Edition for the amount of $1,746. Item five is a pay request from Lodge Construction Incorporated for the First Street Northwest Reconstruction 2021 for the amount of $129,374.77. Item six is a pay request from Greider Construction Incorporated for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $605,343.80. Item seven is a pay request from Farnsworth Group for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $3,618.46. Item eight is a pay request from Farnsworth Group for the First Street Northeast Building Renovations for the amount of $5,145.63. Item nine is a Class C liquor license for East Bremer Diner. Item 10 is a Class B permit, B beer permit for Waverly Oktoberfest. And item 11 is the cash disbursements for August 2021. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. I'm going to take a half a step back and inadvertently forgot to welcome Ms. Solheim back to the dais this evening. So with that, any remarks as we continue through the agenda this evening? Perfect. Until council comments, I appreciate that. Sorry for missing you. Moving to item G is regular business. Item number one, Resolution 21-139, a resolution accepting the project number three of the Waverly CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program as complete and approving the final pay request. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 21-139, accepting the project number three of the Waverly CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program as complete and approving final pay request of $24,800 to Curvan Enterprises LLC of Altoona, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Kangas. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Schneider?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Volfer?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, Resolution 21-139 is approved. Item number two is Resolution 21-140, a resolution approving the purchase of eight Laurel Model LLR 59519 mid-back chairs for the Waverly Municipal Airport. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 21-140, approving the purchase of eight Laurel Model LLR 59519 mid-back chairs for the Waverly Municipal Airport from Riley's Incorporated of New Hampton, Iowa for the purchase price of $267 each for a total cost of $2,136.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any.
I don't want to approve this tonight, not because I don't want new chairs, but because I think they should be sourced a little bit differently. And I'm not sure how often these get used. Those look like they kind of need to be replaced, but that chair model's like a hundred-dollar chair that you can get at Walmart for $145 locally.
I have to agree that I feel the price of these are too expensive. They need replaced severely. Should have been replaced a while ago, but I'm not sure at $267 a piece would be appropriate spending.
Well, I do have to point out that these chairs have lasted 25 years. I'm sure you can get a cheaper chair at Walmart, but I'm not sure that chair is going to last 25 years. I did a little math. I took that $2,136 divided by eight chairs, divided by 25 years, and it comes out to $10.68 per year per chair if these chairs last 25 years, so.
The LLR 59519 is $145 at Walmart. It's the same chair. It's just a little more margin when you go out of town. A lot more margin.
Anything further?
How did this proposal come about? Was this the Airport Commission that, had this proposal to purchase the chairs or how was this generated?
If you would like. So, yeah, the chairs have been in poor condition for quite some time and they, I guess in the past, in order to, to have, I guess in their view, a more responsible budget, they've been getting by without replacing them. But there has been some federal assistance to the city, to the airport that has, that effectively has increased the cash reserve, cash balance, and so you know, they've asked, brought it up again, if we could take another look at acquiring the chairs.
So this is the Airport Commission then that proposes?
Yes. It used to be that there was a special conference room that was minimally used. That conference room has been repurposed and the conference table and chairs have been moved out to the lobby area. And so they are getting used quite frequently by pilots as well as, you know, basically as a worktable, workstation. And so the style of chair that is proposed is very different than what we've had in the past. So the chairs do have armrests, but they're solid armrests and they, they basically rotate to other ways. So issues that we have with the current chairs, we should not have going forward. Is there a possible cheaper source for these? Yes. There is a question as far as whether they're assembled or not assembled. These would be assembled and ready to use. So there would not be any additional effort by the city. Additionally, Riley's of New Hampton has been a vendor that the city utilizes for office supplies and equipment in the past.
I assume you mentioned they would be assembled, I assume assembled and delivered?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, we're talking about nitpicking on price here when you add in the cost of somebody driving out to Walmart to pick them up or having Walmart come out and deliver them and then assemble them and all of that. I mean, I think we're looking at a few hundred dollars difference either way, so I can't see that that would be enough to really, you know, delay this.
A hundred and twenty-dollar difference times eight chairs is $960, or almost $1,000. I think you can get somebody to put a chair together for $1,000 for eight chairs together. This falls under, Mr. Bronner, this falls under a limit where we're not having to get multiple quotes on something. Are we in, is that policy wise?
We still try to see what we can get quoted when we can.
But we didn't on this one.
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. It's such a small thing. I don't want to haggle over it because it's not worth the council's time, but it is in principle. And I think that's where taxpayers are really, they've been furious, but now they're going to be like at our throats furious, so. I think that's, that's part of the purchasing culture I'd like to have us look at, you know. I'm showing $145.52 at Walmart. Plus we'd have 7% sales tax if we dumped locally. But, you know, council wants to spend money, go ahead.
I'd like to weigh in just a little bit on that. I don't disagree with the comments that have been made about, I think there can be merit in getting comparative quotes if, if that is something that can be done reasonably easy. But quite honestly, as a locally-owned small business, I would much rather send my money to another locally-owned small business, even if it is in a different city limits, than to send it to Walmart. I, I think the perspective that I take on this is, as a small businessperson, and I suspect you probably experience the same thing, Matt, you know, we're not buying things by the truckload. And so there's no way that we can meet Walmart's prices. And while I'm very thankful that we have Walmart in town and, and we need to support it, and I certainly do my share of that, I think when it comes down to, do we save a little bit to go with Walmart or do we spend a little bit more to go with a small business, I would vote on behalf of the small business.
When I see in the email here from Riley's, Randy is mentioning that they may, that they would work on making sure they were able to get all the chairs at once because they're scattered in different warehouses. Does anybody know, do they have eight chairs on, you know, at Walmart right now? Because my experience at Walmart is that they have what they have and once they're out, you don't get any more.
Yeah, I've not looked at Walmart. Like I said, half the time in the online stuff, you see they're sourcing from some other company themselves as well. It's not the local Walmart necessarily. It's, we were looking here and it's from some company called Cleanet Supply. We're not even sure where that's at. So is it really local or is it somebody shipped in from Amazon across the world and we just picked it up local? So I don't know. If council wants to delay it, you certainly can. I don't think there's any rush or, and we just offered it up through the Airport Commission to have it reviewed and see what you want to do.
I guess I'd like to see another quote or like to see another. We can do that. I mean, if we had put this off a couple of years.
I was going to say, 25 years.
25 years, two months, it'll be okay.
We'll get more value out of the ones we currently got.
It's not a dire situation, but, you know, we can certainly come back with some more options. On that, that's the mechanics, mechanical room that they're using, right? For the, the old conference room is, what they're using for is, I'm trying to remember the aero mechanic.
Aeronautics.
Aeronautics stuff that he does. Avionics. So when we were talking about trying to get an addition off the backside of the big hangar. Yeah, actually off, off the front by the front. Okay, I guess I called it a big garage or the front.
The west.
Okay. So they could be moving back into that room eventually because that was where they did pilot training and stuff previously, I believe, was in that room. That is the FDO's office there. Where they had it set up for, for some flight training. So all that is being done out in the lobby using the conference table. It's used quite a bit. Yep.
So if we delayed discussion of this till October 4th, would that give city staff time enough to look for other prices where we'd also get them all delivered at the same time?
No, we need to do, it'd probably be best if we waited until the 18th because then we can take the information back to the Airport Commission in October.
Because they'll meet in the meantime.
Let them make a recognition.
So we'd want to make sure that we could get all the chairs at the same time, that they're delivered and assembled, same warranty and the customer service that Riley's is providing.
We can do that.
There's 29 separate places that have this chair for sale right now between $115 and $337. All from different varieties all over the country, so as far as taking bids, you have a whole list of things to pick from. You don't know who's going to get it there and who's not going to get it there. Most of them are going to come in boxes.
Well, it'd be nice, I agree with Julie. I think it'd be nice to support a small business and hopefully we can find one as close as New Hampton or closer.
Well, I think we're swatting flies with a sledgehammer here, frankly, but if the rest of the people in the council wanted to lay this, I don't see any harm in doing that.
Motion to postpone to the October 18th meeting?
I'll make such a motion.
Is that correct? Is that the correct day, Carla?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion by Bergen and a second by Raffi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries to postpone this matter to the 18th of October. Moving forward with item number three is the third and final reading of Ordinance 1094, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Waverly for the rezoning of parcel ID 0901403009 located at 2203 East Bremer Avenue and parcel ID 0901426006 from C2 Commercial District and A1 Agricultural District to M2 Heavy Industrial District. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1094, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Waverly for the rezoning of parcel ID 0901403009 located at 2203 East Bremer and parcel ID 0901426006 from C2 Commercial District to A1 Agricultural District to M2 Heavy Industrial District.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Just a minor clarification in your recitation there. It's from C2 Commercial District and A1 Agriculture District to M2 Heavy Industrial District. Just the correction on the to versus and. Council comments, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Volfer?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1094 is approved. Want to also just go on the record that I appreciate associates regarding this being present at all three readings to be prepared to answer questions, so thank you. Yep, you too. Item number four is approval of the mayoral appointments. I've got a mayoral appointment of John Babers replacing Galen Brunson on the Electric Utility Board of Trustees for a term ending December 31st of 2025. For the record, Mr. Brunson had resigned from that commission, so.
Move approval of the mayoral appointment.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Volfer. Council discussion, if any.
I would like to ask the mayor the rationale for this particular appointment. I know that the utility board had presented names to you that were recommended by them as people to fill this vacancy.
Absolutely.
And that, you know, you did not hit any of those names. And I guess I would like to understand your rationale in putting forward this particular appointment.
Absolutely. So I did receive a list from Mr. Brunkhorst who had supplied that to me in a personal email. And I reviewed those and I talked to Mr. Brunkhorst a couple of weekends ago on a particular Saturday for an event here at the Civic Center. And I talked to another person that wasn't on that list at that time, that was presented to me at that time.
Brunkhorst or Buckingham?
Brunkhorst.
Brunkhorst.
Correct. He had supplied a list. I think there were four or five different individuals of potential, you know, people to, to consider. And I had advised Mr. Brunkhorst that the way that we feel here in the city for all appointments on boards and commissions is through the application process. And so it was his task, response to him, that he needed to encourage those people to apply. Even the person that was there that wasn't on his list that became interested in it, I said, "You need to apply through the application process online." And Mr. Baber was the only application that I understand that, that was received by the city clerk through that process. So this is where we were left with that.
Okay.
So.
Did, was the utility board informed of that process that people who wanted to be on the board had to go through the application process?
Yes, all of our boards are, communicated that information. That's how we've selected them across the board, and so.
Okay. All right. Because the people that I've talked to.
And if they haven't been, that, they definitely should have been because that's the process that we've implemented. I think shortly before I took seat, maybe it was just after that we implemented that, but that's the procedure that we do use.
Right, yeah.
So that, that goes for everybody. I know that when we've had reappointments come up, I know that we articulate that through those boards and commissions, that if somebody wants to continue their service, that they, they need to reapply. So that it's a clean slate, an equal playing field for everyone, so. I have no problem if you want to suspend this and reconsider it. But that would take a motion and a second to, to go about that.
Right.
Any other?
Yeah, if I could comment, as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I do not believe that is widely known.
Okay.
And that's never been presented to me as a commission member, so I would, you know, be negligent in not reapplying for a position that traditionally is reappointed unless somebody.
Told you that process. Okay.
Declines, declines, do you participate? Declines, declines do participate. I would highly encourage we communicate that well.
Perfect.
So, I do believe that, um, the staff liaisons have been approaching people as their terms expire, or as one gets vacated.
Okay.
I don't know that they've done a blanket, you know, announcement to the each board and commission.
Okay.
And as far as the Waverly Utilities Board goes, I can't promise that that's been done either, because we don't have a staff liaison for them.
Right.
Well, and this is not a situation where it's someone whose term was up and they're reapplying for another term.
Correct.
This is someone who would be filling a, a, a vacant term, and I can tell you that the, the individuals that I spoke to that are on the utility board were not aware of that policy.
Okay.
So, I, I would prefer, and I will make the motion that we, uh, that this appointment be, um, postponed until the October 4th council meeting, to give an opportunity for those individuals who are not aware of the application process to make a proper application.
Fair enough for me.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Dranko, second by Raffi, to postpone this to allow other applications to be filled in by anybody that's interested, those that have been discussed in the past or otherwise, to put their application in for the appointment to occur on October 4th.
Can I just ask, is this just for record-keeping for the application process? Is it for ease of sorting?
When Mayor Hoffman started, he, he started this process, and I believe that is so. And he also did say that, at that time, that it was kind of to give everybody a fair chance, and just, like he said, to level the playing field. That within, if somebody wanted to be on it, there's nobody else on it, and they've been on it for years, it's still okay? Or if somebody, you know, maybe to rotate people in and out of positions and, you know, things like that.
All right. So, my, my only concern with that is we have a hard enough time at times filling some of these positions that putting a hurdle in their way, even if it's in the form of a pretty Google form or whatever.
Yeah.
Application you have.
I'm not sure if it-
Might be enough of a hurdle for some individuals.
I don't know if it really is a, a hurdle. Um, I think it's very appropriate to have an application process, um, and to have people fill it out, because there are a lot of times where people don't realize that there is these type of positions open, um, to serve their community, and, um, then the same people, um, the same people are appointed, or they're same people, or maybe they're friends, or, you know, whatever. And it, it just gives a different-
Do we advertise then, when there are positions going to be available?
Yeah. I see, yes.
We have, yeah.
On Facebook and on our website.
Okay. As long as we're advertising that these positions are open up.
If we have applications, we don't necessarily.
I would think we-
I think they need to be advertised consistently.
Yeah, I think-
And it's fine with that.
But regardless, an interested individual has to go to the mayor, right, mayor?
Well, I feel that people, just, just like in this situation, have come to a, a former mayor.
It makes it easier for you to have a form or have forms to look at. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just worried that if there isn't knowledge that these are positions that are available, that people just assume the mayor asks somebody or goes to somebody and says, hey, I've got a position, would you be interested, type of thing. If there's a way to make sure we do advertise that there's going to be three planning and zoning positions, one board adjustment.
Absolutely. So-
Well, it sounds like we need to advertise it to the people on the commissions, because Heidi wasn't aware of it.
Right.
And I don't know, does, is there a staff liaison from Waverly Utilities who assists clerically with that board?
No, and that's what I said. I can't promise that they do know that, because there isn't a staff liaison for that.
So, you, you may have communicated with Mr. Brunkhorst, but not, did you send out an email or something to the whole board?
No, he brought it to me, saying that this vacancy is coming up, and a, a known resignation. And here are people that, you know, may be interested, or have expressed that they may be interested. And my immediate response to the emails, here's the link, this is where we go. It's on the city's website. It's not something that I manage. It accomplishes a few things. When we first discussed this after the first of the year in 2020, it was, how does this process work? Okay? Learning, the, the learning curve for me. And I said, other cities are doing this, aren't they? And we had actually looked at some other websites of cities, and, or I did anyway, and said, this is kind of the criteria they have for it. It's very simple. Why do you want to serve? What experience do you have? Do you have a conflict of interest? Do you understand open meetings rules? And then name, address, telephone number. That's basically all there is to it. It's not a, a bunch of hurdles.
Right.
And I understand the technology part. I had one person that reached out to me and said, I'm up for renewal, and I might be too old, you might want somebody younger now. And I said, no, I'm, I'm honored to, to continue this. And I had to advise her, hey, this is the application process. And she said, oh, I guess I'll, I'll try to figure. I said, if there, if you need help, I'll sit down with you and we'll, we'll fill it out. We fill it out right now. And you remember that day she came in. And, uh, so we, we tried to make it user-friendly. The other thing that it accomplishes is, nobody can deny that person X put their name in.
Right.
You know, I, I, there's no way I can overlook somebody's application. So, if people all go through the same funnel of those coming in, I think Carla and Val both get the email that it's received, and they forward it to me. So, it's not coming to me initially. It's coming to someone else that, if somebody says, well, I applied, and, you know, I've never been considered, never heard any follow-up or anything from it, there, there's checks and balances that way, too.
I, I can also say that Brunson is actually my neighbor across the street, and we actually talked a week or two ago about this specific thing, and he must have known about it, because he's the one who told John Baber to apply. And he told me at that time that he had somebody else that he had told to apply, but they didn't.
Right.
I don't know who that was, but, so somewhere, somebody knew about this.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I think that the application process is a good idea. I, I think it permits you to get applications from people and be able to judge their suitability for a particular opening without personally knowing that individual.
Correct.
Because there are, you know, undoubtedly a few people in Waverly that you don't know.
Quite a few, and quite a few.
And, and, you know, you wouldn't rely just simply on personal contact. So, I think it's a very good idea.
Yeah.
But I think in this particular situation, there seemed to have been a miscommunication or a drop ball, which is why in this particular situation, I think it would be appropriate, um, to avoid some hard feelings and some disagreement if we just put this off to our October 4th meeting and then, and did this again.
Right.
I, I hope that Mr. Baber understands this is not a reflection on him.
Right.
It, it's basically going to make sure the process is being taken care of correctly.
Correct. And I've had people that have applied for seven or eight, you know, commissions, just kind of that, that shotgun approach of, I want to be involved in something. And, you know, there's, sometimes you don't choose somebody, that's just how, how it works. And so it isn't, and the other thing that I will note with the applications is, is this one opening right now, it isn't, we've received 10 applications, we chose one, and we throw the rest away. Nope. Those applications stay in the pool indefinitely. Others can be added to it, because we never know when a impromptu, you know, vacancy is going to come up. So, we keep those in the pool, you know, indefinitely. So, when we have people in the pool, and it's up for reconsideration for another appointment, um, we'll reach out to them, yeah, you put this in nine months ago. Is your intent still there? Yes, it is. And then we'll continue to consider them. So, and that's the thing, is, uh, you know, in the future, when this seat is transitioned to someone else, those will carry over. And if they want to change the process, you know, that's, that's fine with me. Um, I, I will 100% agree with you, Mr. Dranko, that, um, my due diligence wasn't 100%, um, especially with, with what Ms. Heidi- So, I'm presented with that commission, um, but as well, now that the council is duly informed of the process, essentially, um, take that back to the, the commissions that you are a liaison with and, and help spread that message. But we will communicate that as well to the, the staff liaisons and the chairs of those commissions, so that they can, you know, disclose that a little bit better.
I like the application process you implemented. I think it keeps the system honest and-
It does. Yep.
And it's good to have. We may want to bake it into, into our code. I think it's very good to, to do it that way.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Dranko?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to just piggyback on what Rod said. I, I also agree. I think the application process is excellent. Um, I'd like to see us be very intentional about publicizing when there's an opening and publicizing it in a timely manner, so that people have time to get exposed to that information and then get their applications submitted. Because I think I'm hearing from a number of different directions, most people don't realize when there's an opening.
Right. Okay. We can do that. So, we're setting on the motion as indicated, um, to hold this off until October 4th with applications. So, or, yeah, October 4th, so that would roll back to, they would need to be in by September 28th or 29th for consideration to get on the agenda at appropriate time. So, I can't get applications on October 4th and, and consider them, because it won't make the agenda.
10 days, I would say.
That should be enough.
Perfect. I appreciate that. So-
10 days, what's it, this week?
So, by the 30th, Thursday, the 30th, this is the 20th?
For August, 10 days.
They would need to be the-
October 4th? Or 10 days from now?
10 days from now.
Okay.
To make it for the October 4th meeting.
Right, yes. That'd be correct. Sooner the better. They're not chosen by time.
There's no reason to drag this out any longer than we need to.
No, no, I got you. Yep.
So, who will communicate that to the utility board? You, Carla, or Mr. Mayor, or?
I think at the next meeting, maybe, or next-
Well, it won't be before then.
No, actually, the appointment will be before the next meeting.
I, I will give a couple of people a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, it might be helpful to send out a uniform instructional email to all the commissions and their chairs, and their staff liaisons, including utilities and-
I think an official, an official email is better than my promising to call somebody. But I, I will call them, though, in addition.
I was gonna say, I don't think it would hurt with the, the timeliness of this specifically. If you wanted to, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right?
Sounds good.
All in favor of this process? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Section H is reports from boards and commissions, the monthly financials of August 2021. Item two is the Bremer-Waverly Law Board minutes of August 9th of 2021. Item three is the Airport Commission minutes of August 12th of 2021. All received into the record. Section I is staff updates. Mr. Bronner?
We have nothing tonight, sir.
All right. Moving forward with city council comments, we'll start with Mr. Bergen.
Um, not much, just in the, uh, spirit of open communication and wanting to talk to anyone who, you know, that doesn't want to be debating or anything, or wants to debate, or just wants to talk, you can come join me at the poorhouse after a city council and talk city council business over a beer, but I'll be at the poorhouse.
All right. Ms. Volfer?
Um, I, all council received this email, but I'm just gonna read it so I can put it out there. Um, received a email from Alyssa Miller. Uh, she, um, she was requesting some assistance with WSR. It says, I'm coordinating an effort to show WSR school spirit during homecoming the week of September 27th downtown. I'm trying to assemble the cheer squads and booster club and try to utilize the chamber as well. I would love to have many businesses, as many businesses and people involved as possible. I am waiting to hear back from the chamber, um, which they, I did verify, he did call her back today, this afternoon. Um, and have great expectations that we can communicate quickly and effectively to local businesses. Um, she said, I'm writing for two purposes. One, to simply share the opportunity for the town to participate in showing community pride by decorating for homecoming. And secondly, to ask for help from the chamber in doing so, which again, I verified, um, today that, uh, they did give her a call back this afternoon. Um, homecoming is October 1st, um, and that is, I know the Fall Festival, um, is going on downtown, um, about the same time, but what a great way to celebrate fall by football and homecoming. So, um, it sounds like they're gonna be putting up, making, maybe making posters, um, so if anybody's interested, um, in taking a poster and displaying it, um, in a business or a window, or if there's any property owners that have, um, anything open downtown, maybe they can put that up. That way it's easily taken down later. They don't plan on painting or anything. Um, I, I think you can contact Chamber, I believe. Um, you can contact Alyssa Miller or Brian Miller. Um, Brian is president of the Gridiron Club. Um, on their Facebook pages, you can contact them if you're interested. Um, also, the Denver Fire Department, um, there was a fire earlier this morning. Um, Janesville and Waverly both did some, they mutual aid, um, in Denver. Um, so, there is a post on the Denver Fire Department's Facebook page about any donations needed for, uh, that family. So, if you want to go to that and look up what is needed, that would be great.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Raffi?
Uh, okay, a couple of things. Um, the community garden is winding up our season. Tomorrow night is cleanup night. Um, we had a record yield this summer of over 9,000 pounds of produce. Um, I might be stealing Garrett's thunder. I don't know if you were gonna talk about this, Garrett, but, uh, we would have gone over 10,000 pounds, but there was a bad frost in April and wiped out some of the apple crop. So, but thanks to all the volunteers who helped out, uh, ISU Extension, Extension Office and city staff for their assistance. Um, it was a good year out there. No mosquitoes, which was good. Um, secondly, the Best Damn Run is this Saturday, the 25th. Uh, it's an exchange club fundraiser, and so I would encourage anyone who's not registered to do so. You can register online, the waverlyexchangeclub.org website. Registration online goes through the 22nd, and you can also register in person Friday from 4 to 6. Here at the Civic Center, there will be people from the club accepting registrations. You can also show up before, uh, 8:00 AM Saturday. Uh, it's a 10K, half marathon, and a 5K. So, hopefully people will, um, get out and support our exchange club. Lastly, um, a couple of comments about COVID. Um, numbers are up. Um, healthcare, our healthcare system is strained right now by this. The ER is seeing more patients as is walk-in clinic, um, very sick individuals, both adults and children. Um, we recently recognized the 20th anniversary of 9/11, and at this point in America, we're losing the equivalent of the people we lost in 9/11 every two to three days from COVID. And so, this is primarily preventable, these are preventable deaths for the most part. So, I would encourage people to get vaccinated. If you are confused or anxious about the vaccine, please talk to your doctor or your primary care provider about it. And it's also flu vaccine season, and I would encourage people to also get your flu vaccine at one of the local pharmacies or speak to your primary care provider about that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Marx?
I wanted to, um, offer a little follow-up to discussion that came up last week in our meeting, um, as we were discussing with Mr. and Mrs. Flag. And there was a question about me not responding to voicemails that had apparently been left for me and that I hadn't gotten. So, here's my confession. I am a tech dinosaur, and when I first started on council, I was advised to get a special, unique phone number for council business that would, um, route to my cellphone. And the person that did it for me made it look really easy, and I thought, okay, that's cool, and that's the number I use. But what I did not know is that any voicemails left to that number do not go into my voicemail box on my phone. They go to some magical place in the sky that I didn't know existed. So, I have apologized to Mr. and Mrs. Flag, likewise to you, Ms. Volfer, because you said you had left a message for me, and anybody else who has in the last three months, please call me again, because now I know how it works.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
Last week I made a comment, I think it was after meeting or something, uh, to another council member about, hey, there's definitely unity in us trying to improve customer service. And it's not that, I think Waverly customer service, as far as the city, is wonderful. And especially you look at Public Works and some of those things, but customer service is always one of those things that can creep up on you, and you constantly, I preach this at my business, we con, I mean, we talk about this like all the time. Um, and I don't talk about it on council enough, but because, but there is definitely unity in, in improving that. And, you know, for ages, it's always been government and the people. And it's kind of been a lot of this. And, um, things are changing a little bit in that area, where people are looking at government a little bit differently. And, uh, so I think it's, um, you know, a good time for us to get our A-game on in customer service and, and shine. Uh, there's definitely unity in improving that. And I want to also say, I understand some- And I want to also say, I understand it's a very difficult time to offer service. A half the world is not showing up for work right now. So it's straining the labor force and they're tired. And it's difficult and people are cranky. And it's a very difficult time as America is being pulled through this darkness, but things are getting better. We're finding unity in things, so that's a good thing. Let's work on those things that bring us unity.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Drinkow?
Well, very briefly, I had a meeting with the student life office at Warburg a week or so ago to brainstorm some ideas about how the neighborhood and the student rentals could be a little bit less frictional. And I think we had some good ideas. One of the ideas was to, in the fall, when students came back to campus, to invite the students that lived off-campus and the residents that lived around their place to get together for a little party at the beginning of the year. So they get to know each other, you know, have names to associate with faces so they're not just outsiders or old people making, being grumpy, but they can react and interact with each other as actual neighbors. So I think that that is something that has some value. Probably too late to really do anything this year, but hopefully next fall, we can get some kind of a program together where we can start implementing that in maybe a beta test kind of fashion where we do it with two or three different residences and see how it goes. So, you know, one of the problems we have there is friction between off-campus students and their student life because they also, you know, they have to have student life. But, you know, the residents there also have, have rights in how they enjoy their residence. So the problem is trying to mush those two together and make sure that everybody's happy. And hopefully we can come up with some kind of a solution.
Excellent. Thank you. What's on?
Well, first of all, I would like to thank Julie as well as the rest of the council for welcoming me for September as your guest councilperson. I will be unavailable for the final council meeting of the year due to a hospital board meeting. And overall, I just want to thank everyone on this council as well as all of the boards and commissions to actually serve the community. It's not always an easy job and sometimes it's very thankless and challenging and disruptive to our personal lives. So again, I just appreciate all the time and energy, especially council, it's quite commitment, not to mention the meetings, but also the work outside of the meetings and your personal life and your family life at times too. So thank you very much for that. Again, I appreciate my time here. Just a real quick update if I could, we did gain Fire Marshal approval today. So we will be opening our emergency department at the Waverly Health Center on Monday morning. So we have a kind of a private ribbon cutting on Friday that we want to invite all of the city council members to as well as some of our city administrators. And then we have some other individuals coming. But we look forward to being able to provide the high level of care that we've been offering for many years, but in a much more efficient, clean and welcoming environment for our patients.
Absolutely, that sounds wonderful. So thank you very much. Mr. Kengas?
Hi, I'm good for a minute.
All right, thank you. I only had a couple of things. I just, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Drinkow. I know it's sometimes a challenge to confront issues that may be contentious and that kind of thing. So I want to ultimately thank you for saying, hey, we have an issue here that I think hasn't been really addressed and we're going to take care of it. So thank you. So that leaves two things that were on my list here is last Wednesday afternoon, Thursday and Friday morning, city administrator Bronner, city attorney, Mr. Berger, and our finance director, Gina, all went down to Coralville for the Iowa League of Cities Conference. I can't speak for them, but I'm sure that they gathered a wealth of knowledge just as I did. We'll be implementing those things as time goes on when it comes to the budget season, when we talk about housing, when we talk about all different kinds of things. So it was very well worth it. I was talking to Carla today. I would strongly suggest next year, whoever's on council, if you can take the time for one day, two days, three days, the whole time, the networking is just phenomenal. And then also the sessions are fantastic as well. You will walk away with something, no matter how long you've been on the council. So the only other thing that I have is I had a couple of people just today inquiring about trick or treat. I know we're over a month away, but people are trying to plan things, schedule things. I don't know if it's block parties or whatever they're trying to do around it. But just like last year, it will be Saturday, but it'll be the 30th instead of the 31st this year. And we're keeping with the hours of 5:00 to 7:30, like we did before. So giving just a little bit of extra time. That way, you know, people can do later in the evening or they can do earlier in the evening depending on how old their kids are and that kind of thing. The only reason why we're doing that expanded hours is because it's on Saturday. We're not, you know, people typically aren't working on Saturdays necessarily and they can make that time work. So if we're looking at during the week, we'd be shortening it up to 6:30 to 7:30 or something like that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. We adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.